Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Person? Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. McGurven?
Here.
Ms. Witchy?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move we excuse the absent council member.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, we excuse Council President, Don Person. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, moving on to a very special proclamation.
This proclamation is for National Black History Month, whereas the beginning of Black History Month was first called Negro History Week, as conceived and announced by historian Carter G. Woodson and celebrated during a week in February 1926, and whereas the 1976, fifty, in 1976, fifty years after the first celebration, the entire nation had come to recognize the importance of black history and the drama of the American story, and the week was expanded to a month. And whereas confident that their struggles matter in human history, black scholars, artists, athletes, and leaders have used their talents to change how the world views African Americans, and whereas African Americans, as well as other people of African descent, have been influential in shaping world politics and diplomacy, and whereas the Association for the Study of African American Life and History has selected Black Migrations as the 2019 National Black History Month theme, and whereas the City of Renton in partnership and communication with residents, businesses, and schools is dedicated to building an inclusive city with opportunities for all, and whereas Renton Highlands Library and Fairwood Library are hosting virtual tours of Renton's African American historical sites on February 21st and 27th at 7:00 PM, and whereas Renton African American pastors and the City of Renton are honoring Black History Month with Realizing the Dream, a special event with speakers, drama performance, and a panel dialogue on February 28th at 6:00 PM at Sky Center. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2019 to be National Black History Month in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in learning more about the rich history of African Americans during this special observance. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 11th day of February 2019, and this is signed by Mayor Dennis Law.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince and seconded by six other council members that this proclamation be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. It's my pleasure to invite two members of the Renton African American Pastors Group that have been serving our city for a long time now to accept this proclamation. We have Dr. Linda Smith and Ken Curl.
Thank you. So, on behalf of the Renton African American Pastors Group and the City of Renton, we appreciate the recognition and acknowledgement of our contribution to not only this city but our country, and Reverend Curl have just a few other words he would like to express.
So, Dr. Smith, are you putting a timer on Ken Curl?
I did. We love him.
You know she'll try.
I know.
She'll try to keep me, but I am, I am a preacher too, so, yeah, just to, just a...
Yes, sir, and you have the podium.
Precursor. One thing I do want to say is, as we recognize Black History Month, and I appreciate the recognition that the city is doing, that our history did not start in America. Our history did not start in slavery, and I think that's something that we need to acknowledge, is that Africans had a rich history on the continent of Africa in countries like Mali, Senegal, Shanghai, and had great kings like Mansa Musa, Sunni Ali, and along the Niger River and countries that bordered the Niger River. So, we want to keep in mind that our history did not begin in slavery, but we do have a rich history here in this country, and so, we, it's, it's great that we've acknowledged that, that we now have a national museum on the Mall in Washington DC that honors the contributions of African Americans. And having said that, I just want to leave you with a poem from one of the great poets of the Harlem Renaissance, and that is Langston Hughes. Langston Hughes wrote this poem that really gives us some insight into the African American journey in this country, and it's called "Let America Be America Again," and it reads like this: "Let America be America again; let it be the dream it used to be; let it be the pioneer on the plain, seeking a home where he himself is free. America was a, was, America never was America to me. Let America be the dream the dreamers dreamed; let it be the great strong land of love, where never kings connive nor tyrants scheme, and any man be crushed by one above. It never was America to me. Oh, let my land be a land where liberty is crowned with no false patriotic wreath; but opportunity is real and life is free; equality is in the air we breathe. There's never been equality for me, nor freedom in this homeland of the free. Say who are you that mumbles in the dark, and who are you that draws your veil across the stars? I'm the poor white fooled and pushed apart; I'm the negro bearing slavery scars; I'm the red man driven from the land; I'm the immigrant clutching the hope I seek and finding only the same old stupid plan of dog eat dog, of mighty crush the weak. I'm the young man full of strength and hope, tangled in the ancient endless chain of profit, power gain, of grab the land, of grab the gold, of grab the ways of satisfying need, of work the man, of take the pay, of owning everything for one's own greed. I'm the farmer, bondsman to the soil; I'm the worker sold to the machine; I'm the negro servant to you all; I'm the people humble, hungry, mean, hungry yet today despite the dream, beaten yet today. Oh pioneers, I'm the man who never got ahead, the poorest worker battered through the years. Yes, I'm the one who dreamt our basic dream, in the old world while still a surf of kings, who dreamt a dream so strong, so brave, so true, that even yet it, its mighty daring sings, in every brick and stone, in every furl turn, that Amer, that made America the land it has become. Oh, I am the man who sailed those early seas, in search of what I meant to be my home; for I am the one who left dark Ireland shores, and Poland's plain, and England's grassy lay, and torn from at, black Africa strands. I came to build a homeland of the free. The free? Who said the free? Not me, surely not me. The millions I'm relieved today, the millions shot down when we strike, the millions who have nothing for our pay, for all the dreams we've dreamed, and all the songs we've sung, and all the hopes we've held, and all the flags we've hung, the millions who have nothing for our pay, except the dream that's almost dead today. Oh, let America be America again, and the land that never has been yet, and yet must be, the land where every man is free, the land that's mine, the poor mans, the Indians, negroes, me, who made America, whose sweat and blood, whose faith and pain, whose hand at the foundry, whose plow in the rain, must bring back our mighty dream again. Sure, call me any ugly name you choose, the steel of freedom does not stain, for those who live like leeches on the people's lives. We must take back our land again, America. Oh yes, I say it plain, America never was America to me, and yet I swear this oath, America will be. Out of the rack and ruin of our gangster death, the rape and rot of graft and theft, of stealth and lies, we the people must redeem, the land, the mines, the plants, the rivers, the mountains, and the endless plain, all, all the stretch of these great green states, and make America again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, let's see, we have another very special presentation. Jesse, you're going to come up and kick this off?
I'd like to invite to the podium John Glenn, the president of the Renton Downtown Partnership. He is here to say a few words on behalf of the partnership in honor and recognition of a true downtown legend who has just recently closed their doors and started the next chapter of his life.
Great, thanks, Jesse. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Jesse. Hi, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity to recognize Gary Slotnick and the 65-year history of Garland Jewelers. This has been a pillar of the downtown community, and Gary especially. I'm pleased to have known Gary over the last few years, and it was always fun going into his shop whenever we had a new opportunity available, because Gary is one of those people who takes an opportunity and runs with it. He's interested in building community, and it has always been, and so when I go around to raise sponsorships, when I go around in the next few years to talk about new events, I'm going to miss his face in the downtown core, and I'm going to miss what a pillar he has been and how he's taken the downtown and moved it into the stage that we're currently in. I'd like to welcome Gary up to accept the proclamation that the mayor read. Gary, thank you so much for your work over the last few years, and thank you for your commitment to downtown Renton.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to say anything? Oh, okay, we got to reenact that.
Ah, okay. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Law, and the council for this proclamation. It was unexpected. Sixty-five years is a long time. I've spent 33 years down there. I've always believed in the downtown, and I still think it has a great future. Hopefully, that will come to fruition with the efforts that are going on right now, and thank you for those kind words.
Thanks, Karen. Before you walk away from there, I mean, we just, we have to say a few words, and just for the audience comment, at our last council meeting, Gary made the excuse of being stuck in the snow and didn't make it down here, but the, but the council did adopt an official proclamation naming Garland Jewelers Day for February 11th of 2019, and I just want to say, having worked with you for more years than I want to admit, long before I got into city government, Gary has been a strong mainstay and supporter of the downtown for so many years, and Armando can remember, I mean, he was, he was making hamburgers while he was selling diamonds, and...
Pizza.
Pizza, pizza, excuse me. Yeah, and, so, it's, you know, we have a very dynamic transition going on downtown right now. Gary's been such a strong part, long when, you know, years ago when the business, business community was very strong down there, and, and then all of a sudden, everybody was rushing off to the malls, and, and Gary stayed there and continued to serve the community, so, and he's been involved in a lot of community projects and events, a very big supporter of Renton Rotary and all of its endeavors, and, so anyway, we appreciate all of your years of service, and wish you all the best when you get to Hawaii tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Okay, moving on to administrative report, and, Mr. Harrison, if you don't mind, prior to doing that, we have the honor of having King County Councilmember Dave Upthe Grove here in the audience with us, and Dave has been instrumental in really helping Renton work through future metro needs to serve our community, and he was here for the committee of the whole, and I thought it'd be nice if Dave could come up and say a few words.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, my name's Dave Upthe Grove, the elected county council member from District Five, which includes a large part of the City of Renton. Thank you for letting me sit in on your work session beforehand. King County Metro was here to talk about some upcoming changes, and I appreciate the opportunity to add a minute or two comments to our agency. I think largely due to those of you at the dais, this seems to be a very dynamic time in the City of Renton, a lot of growth and change in transportation and land use, you know, it's, as Metro talked about, there's a new Rapid Ride Line coming in, connecting north-south down to Auburn, Bus Rapid Transit's coming to 405, you've got all the development at Southport, and maybe a pilot of a private water taxi, new housing development, Sunset, there's a, there's a lot going on, and as your county council member, some of my goals are to make sure that Renton receives your fair share of transit resources, and that you're getting a return on that investment. But secondly, and equally important, is that the regional transit agencies are investing smartly to support all of this good stuff, and that we're able to be nimble enough to support those economic development needs and, and housing needs. So, to that end, as you know, we were able to get a study in, I happened to be our budget chair this year, so I stuck in a couple hundred thousand dollars for Metro to do a focused look at the City of Renton, to make sure that our existing planning processes are taking into account all of these kinds of changes to inform it smartly, and wanted to let you know that my staff has met with your staff and Metro to make sure that's done collaboratively with the city and city partners. Wanted to let you know, I serve along with Councilmember Corman on the Sound Transit's elected leadership group for Bus Rapid Transit and 405, helping support the city, make sure that the city's interests are reflected in that design, and I'm going to be meeting monthly with the general manager of Metro to make sure that the transit study is progressing, and that the city's interests are being heard and connected, and I'm actually very excited about the future. You're in, your geography meant you were in kind of a funny spot with Sound Transit, you're not close to the train or the light rail, and so we got to make sure Bus Rapid Transit works, we got to make sure the county's investing to make up for that, what I would say, a little bit of a gap there in, in Sound Transit, and so I'm excited to work with you and, and your government relations team in the year ahead.
Well, thank you very much, Dave, and I, you know, he said he just slipped in a little $200,000 with the study. That was a big deal, and it was a big deal, and he dedicated it to a study here in Renton, and we, we appreciate it very, very much.
Thanks for the time.
Thank you for being here. Okay, Mr. Harrison, administrative report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. I just have one item this evening. The draft 2019 Stormwater Management Program Plan is available for review and comments through March 4th. The plan describes the city's planned actions and activities for the year to meet the requirements of the Western Washington Phase Two Municipal Stormwater Permit issued by the state. The plan and contact information are posted on the city's website, and you may submit comments to the Surface Water Utility Engineer at klothian@rentonwa.gov, or by contacting the department at 425-430-7249. That's all for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Moving on to audience comment, we have two people signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes. First is Jeff Denine.
Jeff Denine, 320 Smithers Avenue South, Renton, Washington. Dear Mayor Law and Renton City Council Members, I would like to share with you the following information that I've been able to establish from the Renton Municipal Airport Master Plan. Table A1 of the Renton Municipal Airport Master Plan shows that in 2013, the Renton Airport sold just over a quarter of a million gallons of AV gasoline. The 2017 published plane and pilot fact sheet states that each gallon of AV gasoline contains 1.2 to 2.0 grams of the lead additive TEL. From these numbers, I could calculate that the Renton Airport released somewhere between 272,000 to 454,000 grams of lead pollution into our environment in 2013. Table B2 of the Renton Municipal Airport Master Plan states that the Renton aviation activity, general aviation activity at the airport experienced a five-year compound annual growth rate of 6.36% for the years 2010 through 2015. Assuming that this growth is equally expressed in fuel consumption, which it seems completely logical, and that the growth continues through today, I was able to estimate the yearly lead pollution values for the Renton Airport from 2013 to present. They're listed in hundreds of thousands of grams and pounds of grams. The important thing about lead pollution, it doesn't disappear, it accumulates over time in our environment, our soils, and our bodies. By adding the above values, I was able to estimate that the Renton Airport is responsible for 2 to 4 million grams, that's somewhere between 4 to 9,000 pounds of lead pollution for this six-year period of time. Knowing that the Renton Airport is well over 100 years old, it's reasonable to conclude that the Renton Airport is responsible for hundreds of millions of grams of lead pollution, which is disproportionately amount falls on your neighbors to your airport. This is truly a staggering number, especially when you consider the health consequences of lead pollution. I have included a discussion of the health effects of lead below. I fail to see how anyone can see this as acceptable, and how anyone who claims to have any interest in the quality of life and long-term health of Renton can ignore numbers such as these. Lead is particularly toxic to young brains. Studies suggest that just small amounts of lead exposure during toddler years may permanently shave off five to seven points of the child's IQ. Studies suggest that early exposure to lead can also increase the chances of learning problems, attention deficit disorders, truancy, and trouble with the law. Lead exposure affects the adult brain, too. Small amounts have been linked to memory problems, disturbed sleep, and swings in personality and mood. And reported in the 2007 issue of the International Review of Psychiatry, exposure to lead in yearly years may contribute to the so-called age-related memory problems decades down the road. Some experts believe that lead may also increase the risk of Alzheimer's. A 2008 study published in the Journal of Neuroscience found that monkeys developed a condition very similar to Alzheimer's disease after exposed to lead as infants. The Renton Municipal Airport Master Plan will establish the operational practices for the airport for the next 20 years. Without change, and airport activity continue, continuing to increase at a 6.36 compound annual growth rate, the estimated yearly pollution, lead pollution from the airport after 20 years will be 1 to 2 million grams per year. That is a 343% increase from the 2019 value, again, with a disproportional amount of it falling on your neighbors to your airport. This clearly is not sustainable. I understand that much of the airport is under the control of the FAA, and that the FAA is a very strong advocate for aviation and plane owners, but who is balancing this special interest? Who is representing Renton residents if it's not our elected officials? People should be able to live in their city and not be poisoned. People should be able to live in their houses, homes, and not be constantly harassed by aircraft noise. These numbers show a clear and disturbing trend line, which does not bode well for the future health and quality of life in Renton.
Thank you. I, Jeff, I believe you presented this also to Harry Barrett at the airport?
Uh, we talked, we spoke on the phone.
Okay, I'll make sure that he has a copy of this.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And Jeff, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
So, the, the research you've done, the lead is in avgas used by the piston-engine airplanes?
Yes.
But not, but not jet fuel?
No, jet fuel doesn't contain, it's a high-compression piston, and, which is essentially the pleasure industry, but 97% to 99% of the airports' activity involves those planes.
Yep. Good. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Marguerite Richard. Yes.
Because I'm used to taking the mic and doing like most professionals do, but my name is Marguerite Richard, better known as Queen Pearl, and this is Black History Month. Children, go where I send thee; how shall I send thee? I'm gonna send thee, one by one, so I'm here by myself tonight. I'm not looking for nobody else to do anything for me but Jesus, the one that was crucified on the cross that saved me from my sin. So I took a little venture up to Legislative Day, they call it African-American, but I'm black, I have no problem. Being black, because black lives matter. So I ran into one of your comrades up there, Ed Prince, just go, just go, Pearl, go where. When I said, "Children, go where I send thee," I'm talking about Harriet Tubman on the trail for justice, not some Johnny-come-lately telling me what to do. And I'm known all the way up in Washington DC for serving the people in a righteous way, not in a cruel way. It's called cruel and unusual punishment, and I don't like being threatened in public, I don't like being called out in public for all that I've done, and I've got some people that went on to glory in my family, that did a whole lot for Seattle. I'm from Seattle, Washington, did I tell you that? And my Uncle Bob summarized, he brought jazz to Seattle. So, when one of you people disrespect me, you're disrespecting my people that came from Chicago, and they call it Chirac now because it's a hot mess, but I don't like that, and I had to catch the bus all the way to Renton to let him know, don't you ever do that to me again, as much as I have done, and I'm still doing it, because God is not through with me yet. So I asked him to have patience with me, and other folk, too. I just went to a town hall meeting, and I said, "Where's Char, uh, Char, yeah, Charlene Elias Inquest?" They didn't answer me, so I said, "Well, how come you bothering the people on the bus?" Then the guy from Metro, he the only one that answered me, he said, "Well, yeah, you know, if you don't have 75 cents, how you gonna pay a $124 ticket?" Yeah, he was the only one that responded to me, and Gene Colwell's is my representative from my district. Huh? I would say, "Oh, no, something is wrong, because every last one of you should have had something to say, because I'm from Seattle." I said, "What about Mike that froze on the Lord Queen Anne outside of Chase Bank in the wheelchair? He froze to death, even in the midst of all the money that they're putting into homelessness in Seattle." And you think that for one minute, they tell black people, "Calm down, calm down, for what? You better run like you never ran before with the fire of the Lord in here, because you don't know when he's gonna come for you, and you got to be found working and doing something right." And it's a bad thing that a black man would put down a black woman that have helped the nation so much, and took the babies, and, and whatever they could do to carry them on to justice, and we got to get it, we got to get it right now. Now faith is the substance of things hoped for, the evidence of things not seen, though we don't see it, yet we believe, because we're strong, we come from a strong heritage, we built the nation. When you go to Washington DC, you see stuff that slaves have built from their backs. How can you disrespect us? This is 2019, you got to stop it, else you'll come to your house for doing us wrong. Do you understand me? How much time do I have left?
Just a few more seconds.
Then I'll let you breathe on it. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, we have 12 items for council consideration. Are there any items that councilmember like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Witchy.
I move that the consent agenda be adopted as published.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Witchy, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council adopt the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Moving on to leg, uh, excuse me, unfinished business. Ms. Witchy.
No unfinished business. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Planning and Development Committee has a committee report.
Okay, this committee report is regarding the appointment of Martin Dawood to Benson Hill Community Plan Advisory Board. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to confirm Mayor Law's appointment of Mr. Martin Dawood to the Benson Hill Community Plan Advisory Board for an unexpired term expiring on 8/1/2020. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that the council concur in the recommendation of the Planning and Development Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Perez, that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, is that said? Mr. Corman?
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. McGurven?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to legislation, we have one resolution and two ordinances.
Okay, the first resolution is a resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, reporting the net costs of providing municipal services to an annexation area in support of a sales, sales and use tax authorized by RCW 82.14.415 as a credit against state sales and use tax.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Witchy.
I move that the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Witchy, second by Mr. Prince, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay, the first ordinance for second and final reading is an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending maximum building height for vertically mixed-use buildings in the commercial arterial zoning designation in subsection 4-2-120.A of the Renton Municipal Code, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Perez, that this ordinance be adopted as read, and it requires a roll call.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Ms. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. McIrvin?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Eyes have it.
Okay, the second ordinance for second and final reading is an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, adding section 4-5-125 to the Renton Municipal Code to create a residential rental registration and inspection program, amending subsections 5-5-3.A and 5-5-3.B of the Renton Municipal Code to create exemptions from general business licensing, registration, and fee requirements, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I move that this ordinance be adopted as read. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Prince, that this ordinance be adopted as read, and it requires a roll call.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Ms. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. McIrvin?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Eyes have it. Thanks, Megan. Moving on to new business, Ms. Witchy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Community Services Committee will meet on Monday, March 4th, at 5:00 PM in the council conference room. We have five items on the agenda, including aquatics operations update, gift of play scholarship program changes, recreation brochures update, municipal arts commission projects briefing, and emerging issues in community services. And on behalf of council chair, council president Don Person, the committee of the whole will meet at 6:00 PM on Monday, March 4th. In the conferencing center, we will be discussing affordable housing policy discussion and municipal arts commission projects briefing. And lastly, on Saturday, March 9th, the city council retreat will take place at the Renton Senior Activity Center at 10:00 AM. And that is all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McIrvin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Transportation Committee will be meeting on Monday, March 4th, at 4:00 PM in the council conference room. There are seven items on the agenda. First is Lake Washington Loop Trail Project Supplemental Agreement, then Park Avenue North Extension Project Supplemental Agreement, Renton Avenue South Resurfacing Project Supplemental Agreement, Wash Design and Build Agreement, GCB 2433, Wash Design and Build Agreement, GCB 2476, Rack Appointment, and finally, emerging issues including Landing Gear Works and Levin Estate. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
You're gonna be busy.
It's a full agenda, yeah.
Ms. Perez?
No, no, no business.
Okay. Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee will be meeting on March 4th at 3:00 PM in the council conference room. We have six items on the agenda. The first is increased program assistance from .50 to .75 for full-time employees. The second is Renton Hill Utility Replacement Change Order. The third is the SKHHP interlocal agreement. Fourth is RRFA interlocal addendum. Fifth will be vouchers. And lastly is sixth will be emerging issues in finance. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corman?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and Mr. Prince?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, what's the wish of the council?
Move adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Witchy, second by Mr. Corman, that we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.